This conference will now be recorded.
I'm here, Ms. Elliott.
All right.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
I'm here now. Thank you. Uh huh. Bye bye. Thanks so much. Mm hmm. Bye bye. I was having problems.
Yeah, it's just me and you so far. We're waiting for the other board members to come on.
Okay.
Morning. Good evening. This is Tim Calhoun.
How you doing, Mr. Calhoun?
I'm very well, Ms. Little. How about yourself?
Doing fine, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Calhoun.
Good evening. Hello. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Y'all are very brave. You're only two. This is visual.
Well, somebody got to be visual.
Somebody got to show their face.
That's right. How you doing, Mr. Drury?
Good evening. This is Danielle. Can you hear me?
Sure. How you doing, Danielle? Good to see you.
I'm well.
Good to hear you. I don't see you yet.
My, um, my computer doesn't do well with audio and camera, so.
That's all right. It's good to hear you.
You as well. Good to see you. Hope you all had a nice holiday.
Wonderful.
Indeed.
You us too.
Yes, thank you.
Did you mute yourself, Ms. Little?
No, I was actually talking to my husband. I have my earplugs in my ears so that he don't have to listen to everything. And I was asking him, could he still hear us?
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour has arrived for us to begin and open up our Board of Supervisors meeting for December the third, 2020. And we're going to ask now if our legal counsel would give us our opening statement in regards to our virtual meeting. Ms. Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This meeting is being held electronically due to the COVID-19 epidemic, which is made unsafe with some of the form in single location. This meeting is commending the meeting as well as the county's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. We have with us tonight, I do believe, the distinguished pastor of the Mount Sinai Baptist Church, the Reverend Melvin Little, who is a resident of Surrey County. And we're going to ask now if he's on the line, if he would lead us in our invocational prayer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to the Board of Supervisors. Little pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we're grateful and thankful for you have another opportunity to come together that we might reason one with another. Now, Lord, as we, I pray that you would give us understanding and insight. Lord, I pray, Lord, that you would order our steps. Lord, I pray, Lord, that you would help the Board of Supervisors to be on one accord with one mind and one purpose to serve the county of. Lord, we pray now that you will have your way. We pray that the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts would be accepted in thy sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. We thank Reverend Little for our invocational prayer. And at this time, we, uh, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. We're going to ask now, since I can see her face, I'm going to ask Ms. Little if she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance on tonight.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Fellow board members, you have before you the agenda for our meeting on tonight. And I'm asking at this time if there are no questions, or I'm asking, are there any questions on the agenda? If there be no questions on the agenda, I've asked Ms. Chapman to give a roll call vote for the adoption for our agenda for tonight's meeting.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Motion is.
I don't believe he's available.
Miss. He's not available tonight. Motion. Motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Our board members, we have before us first the consent items. The first item for consent is our draft minutes from our November meeting, November the fifth, 2020. And we have our BIS received for the roof repairs for the government center and the circuit courthouse. We have before us employee bonuses. And we have account payable, approved December payable for the amount of $745,849.29. And we have the emergency medical dispatch agreement. Are there any questions on the consent items?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury.
Yes, Mr. Drury.
The employee bonus? Do we vote on that?
Yes, sir.
No.
No, sir, Mr. Drury. We won't be voting on it. We have, we have basically just given approval. We will have to come back on the seventeenth as a board to actually to vote on it. It has to be public, uh, made public knowledge for the two weeks. And we are planning on being able to disperse these on the twenty-third of this month. So we, we can't do it until we post it for, for two weeks. And we'll be coming back as a board on the seventeenth just for that one item of business to approve.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions on the consent items? Yes, Ms. Calhoun.
Sorry, excuse me. Um, the employee bonuses, is that for all full-time and part-time government employees?
Yes, sir. Full and part-time county employees. Yes, sir.
County employees. County employees. Yes.
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If there are no other questions on the consent items, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent items at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved that we'd approve the consent items as have been enumerated and explained.
Mike.
We have a motion on the. Yes, Mr. Drury, second?
That's correct.
It has been properly moved a second that we would accept and approve the consent items. Ms. Chapman, could we have a roll call, please, on the consent items?
Elliot?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. The motion is carried. First, the next item on our agenda is the new business, which is the transfer of county access asset to Windsor Mills, the fire suppression system. And we're going to ask our county administrator, Mrs. Rollins, if she would come forth with a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Drury, members of the Board of Supervisors, and all the public who assembled virtually this evening. Good to see everyone and hear from everyone. Uh, yes, the item that's before you this evening is for the board to consider to transfer the Windsor, to transfer the fire suppression system to Windsor Mill. Um, this is a item that was partially presented by the previous administrator in terms of the county having to get a fire suppressive system to Windsor Mill. Um, as you probably are quite aware of the undertaking of the county having to maintain this particular asset, what we're asking the Board of Supervisors to do this evening is to actually transfer the actual asset to Windsor Mill. And this would allow them to be the sole responsible parties for taking care of all the maintenance on the fire suppression system. Um, the county does not and should not be in the fire maintenance business. But we're asking for that asset to be transferred to Windsor Mill. Um, it does go back quite a few, but I, the only thing that I will add that is, was the county's responsibility to provide a adequate fire suppression system to that business. And not only are we completing that particular project, um, and hopefully it will be completed over the next couple of weeks, but, um, we wanted to go ahead and present the agreement this evening that shows that we are actually physically transfer that, transferring that asset.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for that presentation. Board members, are there any questions of Ms. Rollins in regards to the transfer of the asset of the fire suppressor station to Windsor Mills? If there be no questions, we would entertain a motion on the transfer of the fire suppression station to Windsor Mill.
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, so move.
We have a motion on the floor. Could we have a second on the transfer of the fire suppression system? It has been properly moved a second. Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. It's been properly moved a second. Ms. Chapman, could we have a roll call vote on the transfer of the county access to Windsor Mills for the fire suppression system?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Motion is carried. The next item on our agenda is unfinished business, the relocation of the Confederate monument from county property. And I believe we have Mr. Bill Hefty on the line to make the presentation on this unfinished business. Mr. Hefty?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, as you know, the board voted, uh, uh, to remove the monument, um, in August, and it was removed and is being stored. Uh, pursuant to the statute, we put out a request for proposals from interested groups who would be willing to take the statute. Uh, we got two proposals. One was from, I guess, for the Sons of the Confederate Veterans, Camp Nine, uh, in Surrey for the statue and the cannon balls. Their proposal was to relocate it to property at 384 Mount Ivy Lane in the county. Um, and we have been in negotiations with that group and the property owners. Uh, and they are willing to sign an agreement which transfers the county's interest in the monument to, um, the Sons of Confederate Veterans Camp Nine and the property owners. Um, they would remove it within sixty days, and they would maintain it, uh, and would allow the public to present it so the public could visit it. Uh, they're agreeable to, uh, certain provisions, uh, saying that it's, it's not there for protest. It's there for peaceful observations, um, which they want, and I think the county wants as well. Uh, uh, and, uh, so it's, it would be in the county, but it would not be where it was. Um, and little for the Board of Supervisors tonight is to, is whether to approve a motion to accept the offer of the Sons of Confederate Veterans to take the statute and relocate it to, uh, 384 Mount Ivy Lane and to authorize the county administrator to enter into an agreement with, with the group and the property owner subject to be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Hefty. Uh, we appreciate the presentation. Board members, are there any questions that you have of Mr. Hefty in regards to the presentation of the relocation of the Confederate monument from county property? Do we have any questions of him? I will advise, uh, the board members, and I hope that you have seen it. If have not, I've seen the contract in which the Sons of Confederates, uh, will be entering in with, uh, the county and the board. Uh, and I'm pleased with the stipulations of that. And I'm sure that all, if you have not seen it all, will be getting a copy of the contract. It should be coming soon in your emails if you don't already have it. So I don't have any questions of Mr. Hefty, but if you do, please, uh, present them at this time. If there be no questions, uh, we would entertain a motion for the approval of, uh, the relinquishing of the Confederate monument to the Sons of Confederacy to be placed on Ivy Lane here in the county and to enter into an agreement with the county administrator and our legal team. Ms. Elliott, this is Tim Calhoun. I'd like to make that motion, please. Okay, we do have the motion on the floor. Could we get a second?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury. I'll make the second.
It has been properly moved a second that we would approve, uh, the location of the Confederate monument on Ivy Lane here in Surrey County with the monument and the cannon balls. Uh, Ms. Chapman, could we have a roll call vote on this item, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Motion is carried. Uh, next item on our agenda is appointments. And we have before us tonight, uh, two categories for appointments. The first would be for the Youth Services Citizen Board. And we have the personage of Amia Shears to be, to fill this position on the Youth Services Citizen Board. Uh, and at this time, we would entertain a motion to receive Ms. Amia Shears, uh, to be a part of the Youth Services Citizen Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Pardon me for interrupting, uh, but there is one more person. I do apologize. It is Zaraya Harrell as well. So we have two appointments instead of that one, sir. Thank you.
Zaraya, Zaraya Harrell.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have, um, Amia Shears and Zaraya Harrell to be, uh, appointed to the Youth Services Citizen Board. Could we get a motion on that from the board members?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. And that is, are they? What representation are they? Who are they representing? The school system? You?
The Youth, Youth Services, yes. It, it hasn't, it doesn't fall in the district. This is open countywide. It's, it's the youth services. Not, it's, I don't think it's, well, I know it's not involved the school. No.
But, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, there, uh, I can maybe make some clarification to that. There is one, it's Ms. Amia Shears. She is the Surrey County High School recommended, recommendation. So on the Youth Services Citizens Board, there is one of them that is from the high school. So that is, here Shear, sir. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for clarifying.
And the other rep represents which district?
And the other one, um, Spring Grove, but I do not believe on, for the Youth Services, um, Board that they are appointed by district. Um, I can certainly double check that afterwards, but I believe they're just, um, appointed as to who wants to serve on that board.
Basically, it has been by district and representatives of the school. I mean, unless something changed, um, we may have some at-large members. Um, but anyway, that was the reason I was questioning because, um, was no note as to who they were representing and, you know, who they were, um, going to represent on that board.
Yes, ma'am. And I, and Mrs. Little, I can certainly follow up on that. Um, I did have a conversation, as a matter of fact, with Mr. Elliott in that regard. And I did advise him that I did not believe that they were, uh, district representative. But I would certainly follow back up, if you all don't mind, after the meeting and will advise if anything needs to be done differently.
Well, as long as they, you know, um, because I know I have representatives on the board and other board members in the past have, have them. So that was my question, but maybe something have changed and I haven't been made aware of it. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
I can tell you that probably nothing has changed. I had not been aware, Mrs. Little and board members, that nothing has changed in that regard. So if there, whereby they need to be appointed by their specific supervisor, I would certainly follow up after this meeting and advise the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Little, do you, would this be something that would hinder or would prevent you from voting on them tonight?
No, because, um, um, I feel like they do represent their district or the school system. I mean, I think we had two positions there that was of the school. And generally, we would get that from the school as to who they want, the youth, you know, wanted and, um, to represent them. So, no, I don't have a problem with their appointments. I just, you know, I think that we need to put it into order that it needs to be.
Thank you, ma'am. So we do have, uh, Amia Shears representing the school and according to Ms. Rollins, uh, Zyra Harrell from the Spring Grove District.
Great.
Okay. Could we get a motion to accept, uh, these appointments on our Youth Services Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would accept them and happen to have them as representatives.
Thank you, Ms. Little.
Mike Drury, I'll second it.
It has been properly moved a second that we would accept the two nominations for our Youth Services Board. Ms. Chapman, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Motion is carried. The second, uh, item on our appointments is for our Social Services Board. And I do know that these are appointed by, uh, district because it's listed on the agenda. We first have an appointment, uh, to be made from the Bacon's Castle District along with the Claremont District. So at this time, going to ask Mrs. Little if she would present to us her appointment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, now the board members, I would like to, um, appoint Mr. Glenn Slade to represent the Bacon's Castle District on the Social Services Board. I asked and he agreed. And, um, I think that he would make a great candidate. He's, um, a farmer. And he has, um, worked diligently in the county along with the youth. And so I, I think he would be a great representative for us on that board.
Thank you, Ms. Little. We have, we have Mr. Glenn Slade from the Bacon's Castle District. And at this time, I would like to appoint, uh, Mrs. Elva Clayton. Uh, the reason why I want to appoint her, she is a retired social service worker of thirty-three years of service as a benefit, uh, program specialist and four years of, uh, service in Prince George County for benefit worker with a wealth of experience. And so I would like to appoint at this time, Mr. Glenn Slade from the Bacon's Castle District and Elva Clayton from the Claremont District. Uh, could we get a motion on these two appointments from the board? Or are there any questions from the board before the motion? If there be no questions, could we have an, a motion to approve these appointments? Ms. Elliott, Tim Calhoun, I made the motion to approve the appointments. Have a motion on the floor for the approval of appointments for the Social Services Board. Could we have a second?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury. I'll second.
It has been properly moved a second. At this time, we have a roll call vote from Ms. Chapman.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Motion is carried. We have next on the agenda, our public hearing for tonight. It is for the procurement code change for the small, uh, purchase policy. And I believe at this time, Mrs. Rollins will come forth with a presentation on, uh, this item. Am I correct?
I'm going to defer that to Ms. Danielle Powell.
Okay, Ms. Powell. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Rollins.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, uh, as of July one, uh, the state general assembly increased its limit from $100,000 to $200,000 for goods and services, um, other than professional services. And so the ordinance before you makes the same change to that in accordance with state code. Um, the draft ordinance included in your packet also clarifies the number of quotes needed depending on the amount of the purchase. And all of those changes are attached. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, for the presentation on this matter. Uh, at this time, uh, are there any questions from board members on, uh, the procurement for the code change? If there are no questions from the board members, we do open up the public hearing at this time.
Ms. Elliott, I'm sorry. I had your mood. I was trying, I was talking, but didn't get through. I apologize. I just have one question. Uh, well, the question regarding the, um, let's see, I'm trying to read this. The, uh, the obtaining the three written quotes, uh, up to that certain amount and then obtaining four written quotes. Um, as stated in here, I, I noticed that the sealed bids were removed, um, from, um, from this amendment or the article. And I'm just curious as how and how does the county plan on getting this information out to even our local vendors or contractors that, you know, trying to keep the businesses, I'm sorry, trying to keep the work locally within our local businesses, if, if it can be done? Um, is there a methodology of getting this information out locally?
Yes, Mr. Calhoun, there is. Um, so under the small purchase procedure, that allows the staff to go out and collect as many quotes, um, as is required under the ordinance. So like you said, it's either. So like you said, it's either going to be three or four. And so the staff can reach out to businesses within the county and get quotes and figure out which bid is best going forward. So it can be local, but it doesn't have to be. Does that answer your question?
Ms. Powell, I think you, on my end, you were breaking up just a tiny, tiny bit. So they, since we don't have to solicit bids any longer, again, what? I'm trying to understand the methodology of getting the work out to the, to, to the public, to the key public in order to provide the written quotes. I didn't hear that, I didn't understand or get that answer.
The staff will reach out in order to, to go under the small purchase policy. If there is goods or services that the county needs, the county would then reach out to certain vendors that do the work that they were looking for. So that's how vendors would know that they could submit a quote is that the county would reach out and ask for a quote. A written quote.
So, okay. So it's not published, it's not published to, or the newspaper says that the county is looking for quotes or the key public can provide quotes. The county reaches out otherwise.
Yes, under the small purchase procedure, that's correct. But if the, the county were using the RFP or something like that, then it would be published on the county's website and paper. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Rollins.
Yes, and if I may add to that as well, we also can have a list of vendors, excuse me, local contractors, okay? That we can certainly have here in the county where we do have at our disposal to be able to get local vendors to bid on certain things. So we do have that as our, at our disposal. And I am going to also check real quick, and Mr. Harrison is on the call. You may have something to add to that, sir, as it pertains to local businesses bidding on county work. Mr. Harrison, can I ask you to speak to that, sir? You have anything you need to add or would like to add?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I do. We currently have a list of local contractors in the planning and building office. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, we currently have a, we currently have a list of local contractors and vendors in the planning and building office. And what we need is the local contractors to, number one, update the information to be current. Because what we're finding is when we reach out to contact them, their, either their phone number is not correct or the email has changed and not correct. So we, I guess we would need to send a news flash or communication somewhere, maybe, I guess, on the website to our local contractors and vendors to ensure that their information is correct and current. Because when we reach out and we, we send out notifications for bids or request for bids, we don't get much back and a lot of times we get return emails and, and such. So we do need our local contractors to keep their emails and phone numbers current on our current listing. If they're not on our listing, they need to call in to the planning and building department and add their name to the local contractor's listing and their contact information.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
You're welcome.
That brings up another, maybe sidebar issue or discussion later, Mr. Elliott. But if we have such a list, I think maybe it would be well for us as the county to either create a webpage of local vendors or contractors, again, on a webpage. And that will also allow either existing residents or new residents that come into the county that needs some work done, that they, they have a place to go to obtain that information as well as the county utilizing that information and keeping that information up, up to date as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Calvin. Are there any other comments from the board members? If not, then we will open up the public hearing to our public with a three-minute limit on your comments on the procurement code change for small purchase policy. If you would like to make a comment, please state your name and the district that you represent.
Mr. Elliott, Susan Corvello, Spring Grove.
Yes, Mrs. Corvello.
I just had, I guess, it hadn't been discussed and I was just curious. With, with our county being such a small county and we're not like Virginia Beach, I understand that this, I guess it's a law or, or ruling or whatever it was labeled. I'm sorry, I forgot the wording, that it can go up to two hundred thousand dollars. But with our county, does it have to be two hundred thousand dollars? I mean, we're not Virginia Beach. And is that allowing somebody to purchase that much without the board's approval? Or is there somewhere that says that anything over a certain amount has to be approved by the board? I'm just a little confused on that with this being the small purchase. And in reference to David Harrison's comments in the businesses, curious as to where the businesses were pulled from? If they were Surrey County businesses or if you also pulled from the town businesses? Because there's two different licenses. So I was curious about that. And I do agree, if, if information's not updated, it would be nice to reach out to these people in some way or form with the automated phone calls that we have. Might be a good thing to reach out to people when things like that are, are needed. If you've got to reach out to a group of people or a large amount of people to let them know that that opportunity is there for people to come onto a list, to put their business on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Corvello, I understand your concern. And this, this policy change is, is not dealing with what is allowed to be spent. This is dealing with what we have to put out for bid, projects as a certain amount to be put out for bid. So thank you. Are there any other comments for the public?
Mr. Elliott, Mike Egerton, Denver and Blackwater District. I agree that we're saying in the name of transparency so that everybody sees what's transpiring. There's a lot that goes on that the public doesn't know about. If you have a website, everybody knows about it. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments, pub, from the public hearing? If there be no other comments from the public, we declare that the public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Chair.
Are there any?
Mr. Chairman, this is.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify a couple of items, if I may.
Yes, Miss Powell.
The, although the limit is being increased, that doesn't require the county to issue an RFP or an invitation for bid. The remainder of the code has not changed. So the way the code is right now is that the, the staff needs to still come before the board for any purchases that are over fifty thousand dollars. That part has not changed. I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you, Miss Powell. Yeah, that, that's the same thing I was trying to clear up as well. Thank you, you, you did it a lot better than I did, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
The public, yes, Ms. Rollins.
I'm sorry, I do apologize. Just, another thing may I add in, in closing for the staff report? And again, thanking Ms. Powell, I was also going to add that anything over fifty thousand needs to come to the board. But just in terms of the comment was made regarding the businesses and how we are to notify, I, I want to sort of kind of get it on the record that we are really employing and relying on the businesses to make the contacts to the county. Like you said, we are a very small organization. It is incumbent upon the businesses to keep their information current and accurate. And that way, we can make sure that when we do need to reach out, we already have that information. I think it would take, save everyone some time and some effort in that regard. And also I want to add that is also, I believe, the Chamber of Commerce in terms of having updated directories and things of that nature. We sort of kind of rely on that particular agency to kind of work directly with the business community to make sure that information is up to date because we can gather information from them as well. So I just kind of wanted to, to add that on record as what the expectations are from the county side so that we can all be and understand what that is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. At this time, and other.
Mr. Chairman, also, businesses are to register and pay taxes as a business. So we can get that from the Commission of Revenues Office also. If they are Surrey County businesses, if they are Surrey County businesses, yes.
Yes. At this time, the chair, the, the public hearing has been closed. If there are no other comments from our board members, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the procurement change in the code section for the small purchase policy.
No, Mr. Chairman. Mike Drury.
Yes, Mr. Drury.
I will make the motion, but I just wanted to make one comment was as, as an attorney who handles procurement for local governments and, and also a business person who's been through it from the business side, expanding this, what we do on this evening in simplifying the procurement process for businesses should make it much easier for small and local businesses to apply. So, so hopefully we can get that message out too. Again, this will assist this, our small businesses doing business with Surrey County. And again, I thank staff for doing this. And so I'll make the motion to adopt this.
Thank you, Mr. Drury.
Procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Drury, we have a motion on the floor, could we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we will accept the procurement code change for small purchase policy. The roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir, roll call Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman, motion is carried. At this time, we will have presentations and staff reports. First will be up, Mr. Harrison on project updates.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Rollins. I would like to start, I have about four updates for you all. I would like to lead off with the Marina Trail Project. And I'm pleased to report that the project has been deemed to be substantially complete. We are looking to have our final approval of site walkthrough, approval with DCR on the eleventh or the thirteenth of December of this month. So that project is almost to completion. I would like to also give an update on the holiday food giveaway, second round of the CARES funding approved by the board. That will be held on December nineteenth and immediately following a holiday concert for the citizens. As you all know, we usually will have a holiday function for staff and different holiday events throughout various departments for staff and for the community. But the pandemic has limited us. So this year, we are planning a holiday concert where citizens will be able to drive up coordinated by staff and, and the sheriff's department, park, tune into a radio station and, and enjoy a holiday concert from their vehicles, properly social distance, and, and will be all the CDC guidelines and regulations. And so we'll have some live local talent and artists and, and some other regional artists and talent out there for the community. So that's the same day, December nineteenth. And our projected start time at this, at this time would be six P M for the holiday concert. So recapping again, holiday food giveaway would be December nineteenth during the day, starting in the morning. A flyer will be forthcoming on our website and mailed out, mailed out as well. And then following that, six P M on December nineteenth, a holiday concert. And my final update for this evening would be that we have secured a new economic development director. And, and his name is Mr. Yody Jobri. And he brings more than eight years of experience in the public sector in his most recent role with Economic Development Specialist for Prince George County, Virginia, where he secured over two hundred million dollars in industrial capital investments and created over five hundred and eighty-one jobs. Mr. Jobri also administered a one point seven million CARES program for small businesses in Prince George. Yody is also has single-handedly managed the tourism program for Prince George County where he coordinated and implemented a new five-year economic and tourism strategic plan. Mr. Jobri's educational experience includes a master's of economics from Virginia State University. And he is currently a member of the International Economic Development Council and the Virginia Economic Development Association, as well as the International Council of Shopping Centers. He currently holds certifications in retail academy, our retail strategy, and a basic economic development certifications from the University of North Carolina and the Virginia Institute of Economic Development. So again, we would like to welcome Mr. Yody Jobri. And his first, his starting day will be December the seventh, which I believe is Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for your presentations and thank you for a job well done. And we look forward to working with Mr. Jobri. He brings a wealth of experience. Lack of numbers, what he's done for Prince George, if you do the same thing for Surrey, we'll be in good shape. So welcome aboard, sir. We look forward to the great things you're going to do for the county of Surrey. All right. Almost happy saying, amen, make me feel like going to church.
Me too. I have a story to share with you, Mr. Harrison, but I won't share it now.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have to say this, that I have gotten phone calls from his former county administrator, Mr. Percy Ashcraft. This morning, I was on the phone with the folks from Prince George Electric Co-op and then the executive director from BGR, all calling, congratulating us on stealing Mr. Jobri from Prince George County. And we certainly are looking for talent in Surrey County, and he brings that to us. So again, I do concur that we are very excited about this appointment to Surrey County. And we do have a talented individual who is eager, ready, willing, and capable of doing the things that we need to do in economic development. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Board members, we have the next item, our October LGIP investment letter. We have received that and also the draft of our budget calendar year that was in our package. I don't think we need a presentation on that at this time. We do now open the floor for public comments. If you are a citizen of Surrey County and you'd like to make a comment at this time, we ask that you would please state your name and you have three-minute time limit. Your name and the district in which you reside. All right, no comments from the citizens. So we are closed, public comments. At this time, are there any comments from board members?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury.
Yes, Mr. Drury.
Just, just, you know, I know all of us are getting tired of hearing the word COVID. But just want to thanks to, to staff and Ms. Rollins. Just, just, just thanks for hanging in there and, and citizens as well. Different difficult times and I'm afraid we're probably heading into more difficult times. I know this is a bit different to have to be doing this by audio and everything. But look, maybe we'll see a light at the end of this tunnel come, come the new year. And again, just many thanks for everybody, the board, Ms. Rollins, staff, and citizens for hanging in there. I think things are doing okay. But, but again, many thanks to all of y'all for this and just be safe and careful in the coming, coming weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Any other comments from board members? I thought Mr. Calvin was coming on. I would just like to say ditto to Mr. Drury's comments as far as staying safe in this climate in this year. We have definitely had a, a different year during our meetings virtually. But I, I can tell the board members and the citizens that, that are on board that we have accomplished a lot in this first year under these circumstances. The businesses of Surrey have continued and great things have been planned and great things have occurred. So I just want to thank fellow board members for the way in which we have worked this year in a cohesive manner with, with a spirit of cooperation. And, and thank you for the things that we've been. a cohesive manner with, with a spirit of cooperation, and, and thank you for the things that we've been able to do. And just look forward to working with you in the coming year. This is, other than our meeting, uh, for the bonuses, this will be our last official meeting for, uh, the year of 2020, and we look forward to a blessed 2021. Where like Mr. Drury said, we can see a light at the end of the tunnel, and hopefully soon we'll be able to meet again. But thank you for your patience, and we know that safety is of the utmost, and, and, uh, thank you and, and the citizens, uh, for the way we worked in this year 2020 to get done what we have done. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from board?
Um, Mr. Chairman and board members and citizens and all, um, employees, we thank you, I thank you. You've always been there, you've always done a great job, and I will say, still appreciate you and continue to do what you do. Um, and that's showing the love that you have shown to our community and taking care of that community. I haven't heard any complaints. I don't think anybody's gone hungry, I don't think, but if we did, if they did, it's their own fault. But, um, again, and thank, and have a merry, merry in Christmas and a happy new year. And, uh, as Mr. Elliott stated, we will be meeting one more time before the holidays, but just show love, show love.
Thank you, Ms. Little. If there be no other comments, we will now have our county administrators report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Can I interrupt real, real quick, please? I just wanted to make one, one quick comment. Being on the board for this year has, uh, opened my eyes, uh, uh, to the, the, the wonderful county that, that we all live in. And I'd just like to thank the, the board members and the staff for getting me through this first year and, um, listening to my questions. Some may be stupid, but, uh, I'm learning as I go, and, um, I really thank the, uh, county residents for supporting, uh, the county and, and the staff and, and the board. And just please, please continue to, uh, ask questions of the board members, um, and if you have any concerns. But again, thank you for every, thank you to everybody who has put up with me over this first year of being on the board.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. And ditto, this is our first year working together, and then to put it in the position of, of chairman of the board, I want to thank Mrs. Little and Mr. Drury for your support for making this a smooth transition. Thank you so very much. At this time, we will have, uh, county administrators report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and like Mr. Drury stated, I too, and we too, and all of two are tired of COVID-19. Um, so I'm not going to talk much about that tonight. I, I, in full disclosure, I, I did, I did want to say something about it, but I think we're in a, in a, in a better space, uh, based on the comments that you all have, um, just shared. And I think I'm going to end the note with just something more positive than just talking about COVID-19. Um, we are really looking forward to, uh, what I can say tonight is a state of the county address um, that will give us the opportunity to address the Surrey County community. Obviously, in that address, we will talk about all the challenges that we have faced in 2020. I can tell you that it's been a, a weird year, it's been a challenging year, um, it's been a successful year. We have had quite a few of accomplishments in this county in 2020, although in the midst of this crazy pandemic. And I think it is a perfect opportunity to share with all the citizens of Surrey County exactly how much that, uh, everyone has, um, stayed the course and stepped into the plate and have gotten a lot of things accomplished in the areas of public safety, community and economic development, uh, health and human services with the projects that we are doing. Um, so we're going to be doing that state of the ad, of, of the county address on December the 19th. Um, Mr. Harrison mentioned earlier the event that's going to take place, but prior to that event, um, I will have the opportunity to, um, to do that address, um, with, uh, comments, uh, from the board of supervisors, um, hopefully, um, to include in that, um, but do look forward to doing that on December the 19th. Uh, we are Surrey strong, and we have managed well, and I am extremely grateful and proud that all has been done during this time, and do look forward to that message again to address the citizens in December. Um, we have done a lot. I, I do want to take the time to mention real quick, uh, we, we were awarded a tourism grant, a Wonderlove Grant for $20,000. Um, congratulations to the ED team, Ms. Pet Burnhausen, who submitted that grant application. Um, Ms. Lauren Chapman has been on the prowl and submitted grant applications to the state political control. Um, we are making strides in our broadband. Um, we had a very good conversation today with the folks from Prince George Electric Co-op. Um, right now, we have, uh, connected, uh, they have connected, uh, over 541 homes to broadband.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Is almost a 100, uh, home up from the month of November. Um, so the conversations with them today indicated that they are aggressively working on ramping up their resources to get these connections done. Uh, Mr. Brown, working with them on the technical side of the house, presented them with an idea which they thought was an excellent idea to hold what is called a virtual Q and A session whereby the county citizens can talk directly to the Prince George Electric folks to get all the questions and answers that they want to ask directly to the subject matter experts. So we're looking forward to working with them and putting, um, that particular virtual, um, session together. And this is especially important since we were not able to have the, uh, community center as an education center due to COVID. So, um, from what I've seen and hearing, community, the citizens are asking each other. They're asking their neighbors about the broadband that they have received, and everybody knows when you, that who has it, that it's the best thing in the world, so we are glad that citizens are asking each other. Um, so we're looking forward to that particular, um, um, session when that's actually done. Um, and the last thing I would say regarding to that, we, uh, Mr. Brown had introduced, uh, some time back that we was working on some additional hotspot locations, um, working with PGEC and getting those done. Please be, uh, looking forward to that information being posted on our website, hopefully soon. Uh, the four locations that we're going to have those, uh, hotspots at, they will include, uh, the, um, Surrey County Sheriff's Office area. We were glad to work with a local pastor in the Spring Grove Clermont area, First Baptist Church, uh, Clermont. Um, the other location, um, Mr. Brand, you may have to help me out, uh, is the Dindron Community Center. Uh, so we tried to hit the districts as we could, um, the Dindron Community Center, and we're missing one more. Uh, but there are four, um, locations that we are, um, going to have those hotspot locations in, and, uh, it will be more information for forthcoming as to the purpose of those hotspots to be able to assist uh, our community, um, during this pandemic. And that is all I would have to share this evening, sir. I will reserve the remainder of my comments for the state of the county address.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rollins. We appreciate all you do, and thank you for the service you've given the county this year as our county administrator. Thank you for job well done. Uh, board members, we have before us also, and citizens, the governor's press release, that is for information purposes only, and I thank, uh, you all for being a part of our meeting tonight. And at this time, if there are no other business that draws our attention, the board would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if you could just continue the meeting until, um, 17th, at 7 o'clock, uh, rather than.
Yes, sir, until these.
December 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Hefty, until December the 17th. Board members, uh, there will be a, a next meeting, uh, at 7 o'clock to deal with the, uh, bonuses for our citizens. Could we have a motion to adjourn until that time?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second?
Second.
Probably moving second. Roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned until the 17th at 7 o'clock. God bless you all.
You too. Good night.
Good night. Stay safe.
All right.